One of Doc here is two pages.
Okay, where to start? We're gonna open the 14th.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. I've got quite a few I can cover. And I'm trying to grow up and I wasn't quite ready with the signature sheets. So I'm gonna be asking for your permission to designate me to sign the signature.
Signatory.
Yes, for the actual paperwork for the files. I've gotta get a new printer in there. Mine started making weird sounds. Really weird sounds.
So, did you wanna just point out anything that?
Well, let me go, let, you know. Let me go through these real quick. Normally I do two two seasons of abatements and severance. Normally I would do a half, the first half, and then the second half in the spring. This year, because this will be my last meeting with you all as a board assessors, because I won't be here after Christmas.
Why?
I'm taking a long leave.
A sabbatical.
Yes, you'll have a new assessor.
Oh.
I think January 1st. So I'm.
Will you throw a party for him?
Um, I've decided it's time for me to retire. So.
Would you talk to your friend Donald Trump to, maybe you could convince him to do that?
No, I think, um.
So, um, can I just ask something in this piece? Well, I, you should know that the best in retirement is a beautiful thing. But who is replacing you January 1st?
The, uh, my replacement will be Jackie Robinson.
For her contract.
Yes, for her contract.
Ah, okay.
It's sooner than we thought.
Sooner than we thought.
She's a girl.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we had originally thought I would go to July, but looking at what's going on with the town and the workload.
Yep.
Uh, just so you know, normally in the 17 years that I've been here, I would have 30 to 40, maybe tops 50, real estate and personal property episodes, changes, moves out and changes to work on.
Right.
Over the period of the last year, I had over 150.
That's a lot.
No.
So things have changed. Quite a deal.
Things are changing.
And they're still changing. And I don't think it would be. Well, let's just say for me to stay here until, uh, July and somebody come on in July in the face of the revaluation and I, I just think there's already been quite a few sales and changes.
Yeah, yeah.
Did seem to make sense to put that person right up against the commitment date of somewhere between late August and first October.
Nope, okay, then I totally get it, okay. So July is meeting with the same.
You know, I, I wanna do something else.
I can't imagine.
Not that I don't enjoy your company, but you know.
I get it.
Anyway, let's get into this. The, uh, you know, you can read them here, the reasons why double bill, the rest of none of that makes sense. You have any questions about any of these?
What is on the second page? Oh, oh, SBA that Bill Schlesinger is doing.
Oh, 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 open, ordinary open space, public access. Now, uh, thank you for pointing this out because Mr. Schlesinger had all of these parcels in tree growth for years. And he had a really, a nice, very detailed study made of the lands and he's filed a report. And he's detailed every bug, every type of ant, moth, flea, flora and fauna.
Yeah.
It's right.
That's his business.
You should take a look at it. It's, I was amazed, it's in the amount and number of varieties and species.
Yeah.
Well, he's a smart man.
In the woods in Maine.
Yeah.
Okay, it's like, anyway, he moved the tree growth land out of tree growth into open, ordinary open space with public access. Now, what this means is, and I want to announce this, is that the public has access to this land. There's a, there's a road that goes down, all of these parcels are contiguous and abutting each other. So it's quite a parcel of land when you add the aggregate together of North Quebec Road. And, uh, you know, Renee will be documenting that or somebody will. Uh, so the public, the public can access it.
Which one? It's Schlesinger's.
15 through 19.
Just look up all these real estate numbers and it'll give you the math and the lots and it's a quite a nice parcel of land. There's good access, there's a road that runs down the beach up there, light away. Uh, good access for clambers.
Oh, great, excellent.
Good access for, okay.
That's where we're going.
Who's on that?
Huh?
I used to hunt up in there.
Good hunting country.
Before the house was there.
Yeah, they can hunt, fish.
How much land is it?
Oh, it's, it's probably, uh, I don't know, probably 50 acres or something up there.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure.
But, no, they're, they're all on separate lots and.
Yeah, I mean, they're adjacent to each other.
Oh, nice.
So it's a big one.
So what's that O R P C one, removed property from land and water?
Okay, uh, Ocean Resources, you know, as you know, they, they had their little paddle wheel operation up there.
Tubal Energy.
Yeah, little water path.
Yeah.
And, and they tore all that out. They, they took the propellers out. All that's left is a a frame of some sorts, you know, that it sat on. And they took out all the electrical wires, so they, they basically abandoned that operation. Now, the, uh, I haven't assessed his real estate because what they put in there was attached, affixed to the land and was an improvement on the land. It wasn't personal property. So what happened, when she told me that they had removed the personal property, I, I just took off the propeller part. But I, I didn't know that they took out all of the electrical improvement, you know, the underground they put in, all that pipe, the cage, the transformers, all the, all the connecting apparatus on the telephone poles.
A clean sweep of that.
They just took it all out, so I didn't know it until I got the letter. The letter was after April 1st, or, no, it was, excuse me, it was before April 1st. But I didn't realize, I missed it, so it's my.
Is there anything left there taxable?
No, 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 no.
We got new telephone poles out of it.
And three-phase power.
Huh?
He says we got new telephone poles out of it and three-phase power down North Quebec Road.
We got no more three-phase power.
It has to be. They need to take that down.
It's just gotta be their property.
That made a big difference up there, too.
So we got three-phase power, we don't have any more connection down through the apparatus in the water. There is nothing down there now. So, uh, anything else?
The only one I have a question on Jim is 24. What? It's his era. What was the era there?
That's a good question. The era was somehow over time, he has two parcels of land down there. This goes back to the fellow that bought it originally from Colorado and gets over to Gary. One is a shorefront parcel, the other is an inland parcel. The shorefront parcel and the inland parcel in the, in the position, in the location of the house got swapped.
Oh.
Oh, so. So if you look down below under supplements, you'll see gold down there.
I saw the same here, yep.
So the net, net of all this is.
1,700 bucks.
Yeah, and the, and the house.
Okay, so that makes sense.
And the house was only the house actually, when I went out and looked at it today, I went through it. It's a very small house, actually. It looks huge. But the huge issue is because it's unheated garage space.
Right.
He's got like five bays of garage space there. And he's got a little bitty section of house. Uh, so I, I went through it in detail and reversed, had to reverse all the assessments, all the records. So then the, and I get it spread away, so net, net is he'll get, he'll get a he's already paid his tax bill, basically.
Right.
And he'll get a, an abatement of about $1,700.
Yep.
Okay? That's it. Anything else?
Do you have one more question?
So I may make a motion that as long as nothing changes on these two pages, that we allow Jim, uh, as he's signed, sign the paperwork.
I will say that.
All in favor?
Of course, if you screw up, we'll get you out of retirement.
If you wouldn't mind staying for the first part of the meeting? If you wouldn't mind staying for the, just the first part of the select board meeting, that'd be great.
I'll stay if you want.
Remain. You have the right to remain seated.
Right now? Not here, though.
Yes, right there.
No, no, not yours.
No, just for a second.
Just for, well, we gotta do the opening and the, you know, we gotta close the assessment meeting. All in favor? And we're gonna re, we're gonna open the select board meeting. I don't think we need to vote on that. Let's see the capital. And then we need a motion to sign the warrant.
So moved.
Sent it.
All in favor? So we'll do that and then.
Well, we need that and the motion to approve the minutes of November 22nd special select board meeting as.
All in favor? So, um, the first order of business would be I asked Renee to create a certificate for Mr. Clark. And we're going to read it so we can sign it for him. Dear Jim, on behalf of the Town of Quebec, we express our gratitude for your hard work, dedication as assessors agent for the past 16 and a half years, you calculate. Serving as assessors agent, it's not an easy position, yet the Town of Quebec has been served well with your knowledge, expertise, and finesse in the field. We've come to appreciate and rely on your wisdom and local government and will miss you greatly. Please accept our appreciation as a dedicated employee of the Town of Quebec.
Thank you.
I need a motion to sign.
Motion is signed.
Right now?
Some sick kind of way I haven't actually enjoyed it.
Truer words have never been spoken.
Us too.
Yeah, really.
Great. Gonna buy fast.
Yeah.
Through ass.
Longest, I believe, surviving employee. How many people have been here?
Patsy.
Patsy, oh, right, Patsy.
I got, I got here in September of 2005. Wow.
You didn't go on payroll apparently until June of 2006.
Watson's an aspirant back there.
It must have been the contract portion of.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We can amend the letter.
Thank you.
You'll be all right.
You know, it's been.
It's been a roller coaster ride, I'm sure.
It's been an interesting experience.
Roller coaster ride with taxes, people coming and going, boring, asking way too many questions.
Well, um, you know, the, uh, the folks, most folks have been pretty patient with me and I appreciate that. I've always tried to do the right thing and the equitable thing for people. And, uh, you know, uh, there are times where I wish I was a little bit more accurate in my approach. But sooner or later, we get it straightened out. And it's, it's nothing that can't be fixed with assessing. The only the only thing that's, uh, well, you know, I mean, when you step, I had a, a status tax assessor used to come there named Bill Skinner.
Unfortunate last name.
Yeah, and he, he and I were sitting talking one day and he turned to me and he goes, and, and he's an old school kinda guy. And he goes, Jim? And he started laughing. I said, what are you laughing at? He's just, and we were working and figuring out what's what, who who what, all that, and he says, he said, ain't this a hell of a way to raise money to write? When you think about it. He, he started laughing and, uh, he probably, it's, uh, it's really not a fun job.
It's a hell of a way to raise money to write it down.
You know, but hey, it's gotta be done. And, uh.
Well, you survived a long time and you're well deserved semi-retirement. I'm sure you're gonna do something else. You aren't just gonna sit around.
Well, no, I, I, I won't sit around. I'm gonna focus on learning to really play a mean banjo.
Oh.
Have you ever seen his house?
Yeah, no.
I'd be sitting down on that porch wearing a banjo, so.
Well, he's a good musician. I've played.
And I, I am taking some singing lessons.
Uh-oh, that's very cool.
You know, you might see me up at, uh.
Oh, yes, the dragonfly.
The dragonfly sometime. And I'd like to say if, if, Liz and I, she's retired.
Oh, has she?
Yeah, she retired. She, uh, didn't have the experience that I'm having, unfortunately, because the hospital's really changed in its composition and its personnel. And so she, like many of the old timers there, they became, with the advent of COVID and the lack of choice, and many of them got pushed out because they wouldn't take, take the shot. And, uh, you know, there's, there's things that I've learned about the COVID that if I had it to do over again, I wouldn't take the shot. Uh, but, you know, they've come to view many of their former employees as a PR use, plug replaced the units. Pretty much the entire staff down there and now it's uh, tougher, you know, people, travel, something like that.
Well, it's nice to hear that you don't feel that way. It hurts to leave you here, but.
Oh, no, no, it's, you know, this is, uh, been a good experience, actually. A little stressful at times.
I'm sure.
Huge responsibility as an assessor.
What?
Anytime you deal with the public.
Especially when you're trying to get money.
Well.
I remember you told me when I asked you if I should run for a select board, you said, if you like throwing darts at you, sure.
Sure.
And I thought that was very good advice. I mean, I'm learning to like it.
Wings and arrows.
What is also nice friendship.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, really, thank you.
I make some big friendships there and, uh, you know, the boards have always been, uh, I'll tell you, there's only been one board member and I've gone through or had, you know, experienced, what?
10 boards.
Well, three.
Two or three, yeah.
Three, three boards. I mean, I'm talking the, the old school, the trend, you know, I've seen the transition and the, and the competition of the board over the years. And we only had one, one, what I would say, one selectman who really didn't get the idea of assessing property. Out of all the board members that I worked with, they just didn't get to understand that you couldn't make arbitrary decisions because you wanted to be in charge. You couldn't just say, even though I went through all this work to figure out what's a fair and equitable thing to do, just dismiss that and, and deny an abatement because they just thought that that was what their job was to show me the unbox, right, all that. And I only had one, one, one board member do that. I almost resigned over it. And, uh, at the time. And it was early in, I was, I just, when I, when I took the job, I, I told everybody on the board at the time that I wasn't gonna assess based upon surname or their zip code of origin, period. And, and I've tried to adhere to that over the years.
Not easy to do in a small town.
No, no.
You really did a really great job. We appreciate you putting up with us for so many years. Absolutely. I'll feel the same way soon.
Right.
See you soon.
Have a safe drive.
We'll be up together.
See ya.
Bye.
Okay. What's this?
I'll be back.
It's not on, yeah, it's number one. Oh, uh, NG electric supply?
Yep, our five-year contract is due December 30th. But this, um, these are our suppliers for electricity. So this is an extension for another five years. I had Suzette compare rates with other utility companies and this is better than anybody's offering still. So we're just asking you to continue or give me permission to sign this. I couldn't, you didn't have this in your packet because it's a competitive system and they couldn't give this to me until today.
Right.
So, yeah.
So if you've done the homework and you think this is best, I, I don't have a problem.
Oh, then most of you are.
Second, all in favor? All right, so the motion is to allow Renee to sign the, and the NG electric supply renewal contract under the same terms, is it?
Yep.
Okay, Maine State Housing Authority sewer payment assistance.
This is just an announcement to the public. It's here. You've got it. Um, Maine Housing has launched assistance, known as Maine Water Assistance Program, but this also applies to septic, to sewer users, people in the sewer district here. So if you need assistance, there's applications, um, and we need to sign in or opt in on this so that people have already applied from our town and you need to do this in order for them to get bent this.
And is there, what is the obligation of us and just to facilitate the application and?
We don't have to pay.
We don't have, we don't have any expectation?
No, there's something, there's no obligation monetary for us and we don't, yeah, we don't.
And is there, is there?
Does the money go through us then?
And is there responsibility, you know, for, well, I guess there's some monitoring of applications and that much?
Suzette did say there was. She just told me you guys just said that she, she needs to move it.
Okay, so why don't we make a motion that, um, that we'll go forward with this, subject to Renee and I guess myself reviewing it tomorrow.
I agree.
I just wanna re, make sure we don't sign anything on it.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, okay, second, all in favor? So we'll just double check.
Yep.
And then we'll let Renee sign it for us. I think we'll get it tomorrow. We can't get it now.
Well, can I have a copy of that?
Uh, the Maine Housing?
Yeah.
Yes, after the meeting, sure. Okay, we are at the line of credit for the IRP for broadband. I know some people came through that.
Hello.
Hello.
I made notes, so I'd be shorting to the point.
Well, we can only hope, just kidding.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The IRP is in your packet, that one for sure.
This, this is informational. There's no necessity for a vote or anything like that tonight, but we do wanna keep you all at the speed on where we are on the broadband initiative.
Is that speed 100 over 100?
Yeah, well, no, that, that's what we're hoping for. We aren't there yet. She good or what?
She is.
Anyway, I thank you for giving me the time tonight. We wanted to bring you up to that on the project. The grant, as you know, request, as you know, was submitted. Um, and we've recently learned that the Maine Connectivity Authority has extended the decision period from what we thought was gonna be January 6th to probably two weeks after that. This doesn't come as a surprise. There have been changes, the FCC map. These applications are hugely complex and Christmas happens in the middle of it. So we're not surprised. It does give us a little more time to get our things organized to match and lead up to it. Um, the item on the agenda tonight is the request for proposal, which we have just sent out to three banks. As you may recall, there is a matching requirement to go with the grant. We plan to apply for a bond through Maine Municipal in the spring. But before the spring, between the time of the grant and applying for the bond, we need to have something in place. So we've sent out a request for proposal for a line of credit to be used as a bond anticipation note. The line of credit that we've asked for would be a one year, because that's basically the standard on lines of credit, interest only and interest payable at maturity. So there won't be any interest paid as we go along, which would come before we get money coming in. This is a perfectly legitimate thing to be asking the banks to do. They do this all the time. It's just a question of finding one that will do it as a rate, at a rate that we wanna live with. We, as I say, sent it out to three and as far as I know, we've heard back at least some interest from two of them.
Three.
Oh, we've heard all three.
Yep.
All three have thanked us for the request.
And it'll be due for your next meeting, the 23rd.
So you'll see the, their response.
So you're gonna alter the line of credit, that you're not gonna spend any of it until you get the grant approved?
Oh, absolutely not, absolutely not, and in fact.
And that's why you're asking for no interest up then. Then once you start spending, there'll be interest to accrue.
There will be interest accruing, but nothing will be due until maturity. So we won't have to pay as we, you know, before we've got money coming in, we won't have to start paying.
No.
However, we will be applying for the bond to replace this in like April. So we're not gonna get way out into this line of credit somewhere. It'll be paid when we get the bond.
Now, we can't sign off on that, correct?
Yeah.
Don't we have to go to the town vote?
No, the town vote that we got was for financing, financing up to a half.
I do remember that, I just.
Yeah.
But wasn't that in contention on receiving the grant?
Correct, and so is all this.
Right, and all of this is too. This is, we'll know about the grant in mid-January. We'll be looking at getting this right about the same time.
So you're just saying you're in the application process?
Yeah, this is, this is just.
You want something lined up?
Yes.
Yep.
So.
See, the only thing I'm going by is I, I know the town charter.
Get your ducks in a row.
The town charter doesn't allow us to spend any more than $5,000 of that spare money.
Right, but we had a town vote at town meeting.
I remember that, but does that override the charter?
That covers this, that covers this.
I'm just asking a question.
Well, I think that it all surrounds the grant approval, but I think that, um.
But are we covered?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, from the vote.
Because the town meeting agreed that you'd been entered.
So that overrides the charter.
Yes, when the town, yeah, once a year, otherwise you'll have to have a special town meeting.
Right.
Okay.
So, yes, you're just getting everything organized.
So that's the first thing. And if you'd just give me another couple of minutes, I had a lovely conversation with Mark Willett a couple of days ago and I wanted to tell you if, if the IRP for that amount scared you, wait till I tell you the rest of it.
I can't imagine.
Yeah. We, we're looking at the expected requirements of the grant as we go forward. And of course, when we applied for the grant, we get this little booklet that's about this, they're telling you, oh, this will be your grant, this will be your grant, and with no detail to it at all. So what we're now learning. And again, to your point, Jim. So what we're now learning, and again, to your point, Jason, we have not come across any amounts that will take us over that possible 50-50 match thing. So we're well within sight of the vote that the town made.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that that's-
So, what was the top, was it was five million, was it not?
It was 4.6. It was the estimated top.
Right. And we were not, this 50-50 match was the vote?
Was the vote, right, right.
Two point three.
And we're looking at this point of a match of well below that.
Well, see, I was just going to ask you that. I heard that it was below, it's gone down a lot.
It has gone down a lot.
And the potential grant dollars have gone up a lot, so it really is-
It's a good bit.
So what was the grant application for? What did you request?
The grant application?
And what did you request in the grant application?
The grant application estimate was for a project of 4.6.
Okay.
And then they'll come back and tell us how much they're giving us against the match. We'll look at it and say, yes or no, we want it. Probably yes, but, you know. If they come back and say, no, you have to match 60%, we're going to say, no, don't think so. Didn't have to vote for that.
What the grant said, what was the match requirement when you applied for the grant?
There was, there was none specific. They will tell us what the required match will be based on the various elements of the eligibility for coverage here in the town. Depends on how many are served, how many are unserved, how many poles we have, yada, yada, yada. And then they come back and tell us what the budget is.
Well, I'm not writing that grant.
Does Mark, does Mark have a feel for that? I mean, he's pretty intuitive.
Yes, where we got to on it was that we were looking at, now I'm going to get the numbers wrong. We were looking at a hundred, a million three, and then that was-
For the credit.
Yeah, for the line of credit. And I think that includes both the match amount, and then I think we've talked to you previously that there's a section of town where the grant cannot cover it because Consolidated has already been given a grant to run wires out there. So there's about 700,000 that we'll have to include in our portion.
So you're up to 2 million?
No, that's the 1.3.
Oh, that includes-
That includes the 1.3?
Yeah. So we're still well below the 50%. Now let me go forward and tell you what else we can learn. The second thing is, we anticipate, my numbers are screwed up here. The first thing we're going to become back to before is to set aside some of the ARPA money for us. We need to have, from early days, roughly $50,000 that will be, and I'm sure you're going to appreciate this, when something awful happens, we need cash right now, this is the contingency fund. This is not to say that we aren't going to be getting this money back over time from subscribers. We'll replenish it, we'll increase it, but at the get-go, we need that seed money, and we're probably going to be coming back to you for something like $50,000 out of the ARPA money. Not asking for it yet, but that's a heads up, okay? Second thing, we were told right at the get-go, these next two items are because the town is owning the infrastructure, because the way that we're working with deal with Axiom is that we own it and they're our partner, they're servicing, therefore, we will need to have some kind of insurance coverage. The first thing that we were told was that we would have to insure for all of the connections on the poles, et cetera. Then Mark is saying that one of his other towns went to the PUC and said, look, Axiom, who is their partner, has this kind of coverage. Are we not double insuring here? And the PUC said, uh, yeah, we think you are, we agree. And then here's a little kicker where we've got to get more information. They said, the town has their liability insurance through the MMA for like $400,000. As long as you can show your evidence that you have that coverage, you're good. And of course, Renee has talked to the MMA, and they're saying, you can't use this money for broadband.
Why?
We don't have that answer, you know?
Yeah, we don't have that. This is a moving target.
I basically verified that we do indeed have $400,000 for Torquay.
Torquay coverage.
So whatever that lends us in the world of broadband, we're going to let Mark work with it.
So Mark's got to find out more from us, and I've already gotten back to him and said, so what did your other town find out about the MMA coverage versus insurance? Tell us more. So we're hoping-
Ongoing conversation.
We're hoping that this ongoing conversation will resolve itself paper route. Okay. One more thing, because the town will own the infrastructure, there is a requirement for an irrevocable letter of credit that will be to the benefit of CCI. That's about all we know at this point. It's based on the number of poles. Mark says, based on the poles we have, his estimate is 300,000 will be the letter of credit. Questions? Is this a standby letter of credit? Do we go through a commercial bank and nothing happens until they need it? Is it a letter of credit that we'll have to cough up and leave money sitting there for? What is it for in the beginning anyway?
Right.
Don't know any of those answers. Don't know any of those answers, and Mark didn't really either.
It's still a moving target.
It's still a moving target. And Mark didn't know the answers either. He was giving us the heads up. There will be something like that required.
I also understand that we're going to get a little bigger piece of the pie than originally, originally thought, and that's, that's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
So we were going to get 25% of the, right, I understood, we spent the longer-
We get $25 per subscriber.
Out of 65.
Yeah, well, whatever they're paying.
Whatever, yeah, whatever the service they buy is, could be options. So would it be not better to have it as a percentage in case it goes up?
Well, I thought it went up-
In the 20 years, you're going to have your subscriber price go up.
When you went to the higher, you know, like if you wanted 100 over a hundred, I thought the title would have been more.
The 25 was for the basic, and that's still to, again, still to be worked out. The other thing that we will be getting with in the next week is the actual contract, the proposed contract with Axiom, and that will be one of the items that will be in there to be determined.
So do you know how much the town pays in legal fees to review any of this so far?
Nothing so far.
We haven't spent any tax fare money.
We have spent none. The contract, we will have to have reviewed, of course, and-
But we've been using grant money.
Yeah, we've been using grant money to cover this stuff. It'll be good. We still have plenty of grant money. From Island Institute, and from the Maine Connect-
3,001 and what's the figures on those two grants? 3,001 of them and 1,000?
1,900?
2,000 from Connect Maine.
Right.
And 3,000 from Maine Island.
Island Institute, yeah.
But the Island Institute grant is for marketing publicity and so forth. So it'll be the Connect Maine one that we will be in the news for this other show, because it's a get-ready grant. Okay, one more thing. Confirmed with Mark that for pre-subscribers, for pre-subscribers, for all of those of you who will sign up in advance, please, 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 to get your name on the list in order to be an Axiom internet subscriber when the time comes, if you sign up in advance, you will get your connection at the time, the drop to your house will be free. This really behooves you to get your name on the list. Once we know we have the grant, then we're going to go back to the people that are on this pre-pre list of what we've got, something like 90 there?
121.
Woohoo, we're growing.
121.
121, yes. We'll be coming back to all of those people and looking for more to come up with $99. That $99 will be then credited to your first service, so something like a month and a half of your first service will be that $99. What it does, as Mark is so fond of saying, it shows that our public has skin in the game, that they really want this. So please sign up.
388?
Yeah, we need about 388.
And you can sign up for this after the grant's been awarded?
As soon as we know we have the grant, then Axiom, well, basically, as soon as we have the contract with Axiom, then they will start taking orders and asking for the $99.
And we'll start a fund, and all that money will go into a fund.
388, you around? 388 households?
Minimum.
Yeah. The other piece of this, and that I asked Mark a little bit, what if somebody says, I really want internet broadband, but I don't got $99 to give upfront? He says, we'll work with them. They've done this in other towns. If they want to pre-subscribe in order to get the deal of having the free drop to their house, they will take that money over two or three months, you know, sign up now and pay, so you will be paid up by the time things happen.
The town can do that in-house.
The town can do that.
We can manage that in-house.
I mean, is there any way, I'm just looking this out there, if we don't get the 388 to win, which my numbers drop off a lot in the wintertime, is there any way we can make up for it in the summer and say, hey, you guys are only here six months out of the year?
Yep.
Can we build them more, or you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But you're obligated not to spend any money until you have the 388. You don't want to accept the grant, start spending money, and then not get the 388.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We will be already building by the time we get to 388. Do not expect that we're going to have 388 subscribers before we know we're moving forward. We can't do it. It hasn't happened. It hasn't happened anywhere.
But it falls on the responsibility of the town. Are the towns that you've researched, that Mark researched? And they're all 1,300 people? That's their population?
The percentage, the percentage of the town that was needed has been met every time and well over. Mark says 388 is more than doable. He's not worried about it in the least, he says. Now, personally, I worry about it. Yeah, and to Jason's point, yes, there will be some arrangements for summer people. It'll probably be something, don't owe me that, but it'll be something like pay for nine months and get a year's worth or something like that.
Because my concern is, I see what happens, the trend is even getting worse. We have people that are here for six months out of the year, seven months out of the year.
Absolutely.
And the carpet rolls up when it gets cold.
Yeah, and turn the service off and I'm gone.
And everybody's numbers, I mean, from the red light to my wife's, to just everybody's numbers, just boom, drop off, they're in the basement.
Well, they're going to, what they're doing in other places is working something out that, as I say, something like eight to nine months, and then you get the discount of the other like three months off, something like that. And finally, that, again, if you are unable to do the upfront, or if you're unable to pay the $99, or for that matter, if you're unable to pay the $55 when the time comes, part of the deal is that the Affordable Connectivity Program is there, and we will be supporting that. So you can get internet through Axiom at $30 a month, which will be paid by the Affordable Connectivity Program. So sign up. Thank you.
Sign up on the website, you can call the town office, you can email me.
Yes, call your aspirant.
Townadministrator@townwatt.com is any way to sign up.
See, I knew you had it covered. I knew you had it covered, yeah.
So far, so good. Keep you awake nights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Main Water Sewer Assistance Program.
We already talked about that.
We've got Christmas events scheduled, and Wanda's here as well. Wanda?
Yes, thank you. Again, I just wanted to update you, so I did print out something with all your schedule. We've had to schedule out for a little bit now.
It's in their packet, Wanda, if you want to get those handed out to the public. Want to give those to the public?
Yes.
Here, you can have mine back, we can get mine back. We have this one.
I believe something up above the-
Well, as usual, you're doing a wonderful job.
Well, all of us are working hard, and your manager is also. I just wanted to update you, the last time I talked to you, we were going to, if anybody wants one, we were going to see about doing something, about putting lights up on the bridge, and last week, I had the opportunity to go to Campobello, to the Campobello Council meeting, and they were so excited, so receptive, they were as excited as people are always being.
For the lights?
For the lights.
For the lights.
They really were excited, I'll tell you what. They gave us a very generous donation. And then they also, not that day, but the next day, they called and were going to use their electricity, which Renee's worked since last summer trying to get this together, we just couldn't get it. So they're going to let us hook into their, and I will say, one happy part of this, John and Shelley and I went down there Monday and took all those lights off, and Joel had taped those lights, and I'll tell you what, it was a labor of love. The work that he put into that, I don't know who helped him, but it was unbelievable. It took three of us an hour and a half just to get them off. And they were broke, we have, we set up the donation, and we've gotten, let's see, 1,300, I think, so far, and so this weekend, we're going to buy our first light and get those up, and we're just really excited and we wanted to share that, and thank you for your support, and I tell you, Campobello feels the very same way.
That's really great.
And St. Joel and Lacy and Ainsley, they would like to have us do this in honor of Ashton, so that's what we will be doing. But in the Christmas holiday, we put that out there, you know, that's going to be good too.
Thank you very much, Wanda.
No, Renee, I thought we were going to put it up, when, last year.
Last year, we've been trying. We've had two options of the property behind the post office and the Maine DOT. DOT owns the road, and there was issues there, so we went to the post office, and it could have been done, but it was going to take easements and lots of legal stuff that, it would just seem, you'd just shake your head at it. So our next option was to go across the road to see if a private landowner might, and that's where we had left it. I had texted our electrician about meeting with a property owner that might let us put a pole of some sort, and then Wanda got the news about the Campobello. So we're kind of pulling back now on, if they're willing to do that, if that's agreeable, then we should just go with that, or do you still want me to-
No, I think, really, I think, you know, I mean, at some point, like Dan did brought this up, and I think he talked to Joel about this too, about us doing it for the holidays. You know, and what we plan to do anyway is bring these lights down, you know, keep bringing them down, because last year, Shelley's checking every string of lights, but, you know, we're going to take better care of them.
We even thought about running an extension cord from the dock.
We should keep going on the pole deal, you know, you know, just so we have something on our side.
Yes.
It's in your, like, person's hand right now, he knows we want a meeting.
And I mean, I don't know the options, but like, the solar light options for outside now are crazy. I have them on the front of my house. You know, it's just a small solar plate, you have to have someplace get sun. The bridge would, I mean, and they're not even that much more expensive than the electrical lights, that you never have to have electricity for, you know?
We just use them decorating for the Ellsworth Christmas Parade, so 97, 7, 10, that's the solar.
Yeah, we have them on the front of our houses this year. Yeah, I have them in my potting shed, and they've gone. I thought they would give out at wintertime, but they're still lit up.
I don't know how bright they would be.
I don't know, and I don't know what, you know, I don't know if they make more commercial grade than residential, but I just don't, you know?
Shelley did talk about, you know, that's something we should look into. You know, right now, we're right at the, you know, kind of getting out by Christmas, but, you know, next, I mean, we can put better effort into it. And of course, we're going to buy- And of course, we're gonna buy hopefully a good quality light right now, but we are, Shelley's thinking about.
Nine hundred feet for one side?
Yes, nine hundred feet.
So we need eighteen hundred feet, you know, of lights.
There's two rental.
There's a lot of solar.
There's two rental properties that are bought, right there, and they're both excellent people. Very, very nice folks.
Are the poles perfectly owned? They're not perfectly owned.
Not the poles, no.
I mean, there's one real close to the bridge on the right-hand side.
Well, we looked at that half.
I think it's already got a meter on it. And that's where the meeting was.
I know, I'm very well aware.
I see if it's an option. We just have to get workers doing it.
But thank you so much. The Celebration Committee thanks you guys too for, you know, letting us do all this stuff.
You know, Wanda, I have to ask you one thing. You know, yearly I watch the Christmas tree in the triangle. And I love it. But invariably, yes, we get one of those wonderful storms and they blow down. Is there anything that you've done or can we do to make that more secure?
Well, no, we're, you know, you know, we have our extensions from the poles. And that's all we can do. But one thing we are gonna do this year when we have the lighting is we're not gonna put decorations because they go everywhere. But we're gonna have lions. Last year the kids created these beautiful wooden ornaments and we're gonna see if they'll let us just hang them over there.
Yeah, that sounds a good idea. Cause every year I'd see them blowing up on my yard.
Yes, yes, they're going everywhere.
Well, thank you, Wanda.
Thank you.
You're in the committee doing a great job.
Well, thanks. We've been working hard on everything. Thank you.
Any shows. Awesome job.
It's a great group. It really is.
So we had added a sewer abatement and also we have to sign a certificate of commitment for the sewer, sewer rates for this order. Which wasn't on there.
It came out after the pandemic.
So August first, October thirty-first, it's forty-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, forty-seven cents. So I'll make a motion to re-sign this.
Oh, second.
All in favor? And then the abatement is seventy-four thirteen and the reason is.
That was a b, uh, billing error.
Billing error seasonal. So, and so I'll make a motion that we sign the abatement as well.
Oh, second.
All in favor? And I think Renee has an admin report she wants to add.
Okay. As you saw in your boxes, you've got a copy of the most recent audit that is complete. And just wanted to let the public know that that is done, this, this full year, twenty twenty-two audit. Uh, sorry, twenty twenty-one is complete as well. The bandstand, we have some people to thank. It's been decorated this year and it's gorgeous and beautiful. And I love the trap theme, supporting our local fishermen. Joanne Case, Debbie and Neil Rogers, Paul Matthews and Dallas Hood.
Looks great for them.
We decorated that, so heartfelt thanks. I had an update from sewer plant operator Bruce Green. The chemicals, the line item, the budget is going to be a lot healthier now that the M-HOP tank, one of them is operational. He has seen the, the numbers cut in half with the chemical usage already.
That's real good.
As we suspected, that was the culprit. And looking, we're really looking forward to that budget hopefully staying in the.
Chemicals really went up.
Yeah, yeah.
Very double.
On the line of that discussion, the sewer truck is at Prescott's right now getting an evaluation and an assessment of its future. It, it has a lot of things that need to be done to it in order for it to keep it off, to be inspected.
Where?
At Prescott's Auto Plating in East Peshawas. And I know this frame issues, lots of little things that.
Is that the truck? The Public Works has paid to the sewer department. Is that that?
Well, yeah, kinda. It's, yeah, it's always been the sewer truck, but there was something to that.
I think I would think Sean or Yates would be able to tell you who's any good.
Yeah, it's a two thousand and seven. And before.
You know our sewer truck falling apart in that?
No, no, no. That would be. The engine's great. But the last time it had an overhaul, our own Public Works did it. They were able to take the bed off the truck and they fixed the frame. And, and we're hoping that once we get that list back of what needs to be done, that they're gonna look at it and see what they can do. They're very talented mechanics at our own Public Works and hopefully can save that department some money. So that's where we are. It's just an update on what's happening. And we may want to in the budget season start putting away in a bucket a reserve for a future truck.
We just need to keep it local, that's all.
Yeah.
All the business.
The Red House, one twenty-three Main Street, has been, we got, we were notified that the neutral had, had an issue. And so the power company pulled the meter until we got it repaired. Conrad COE did repair it and they have since put the meter back.
Okay, good, good.
Yep. And speaking of Public Works, I wanted to thank them. The reeds are up downtown on the lights. And they put the, the, the lights up around the electrical work.
That's great. Putting wind against.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're moving by Illinois.
Yeah.
They're driving.
And they're gonna have a job on North of Back this week too.
Yes.
I was glad.
And that was it. That's all I have.
So we're up to committee updates. Any committee updates? Public comment?
I have a comment that I would like to address to Mr. Wagner. In your regards as the liaison to the Shellfish Commission, is there a better way of notifying the public when a listed meeting will not be held?
And if I got the listed meeting not being held as well in a long time, I think I'd be able to tell you.
The meeting is listed on the town website. And it was listed on the town website this last Monday to be assessed. But there was only one person here for that.
Oh, it was canceled on Facebook.
Yep.
Facebook is not an official notification.
Yeah.
No, but then I went on, once I got that note.
I got.
I went on the calendar.
She didn't notify.
Like, same day.
I looked at it an hour before the meeting and it was posted.
What happened?
She was homesick from work, so she wasn't able to conduct the meeting.
She wasn't working. She was definitely homesick.
Right, she was.
She would really be sick if she's done one.
That's right.
Yeah, a little bird notified me about that.
Yeah, I thought, I wanted to make sure that you saw the channel.
I will discuss that with all the powers.
Well, I think maybe what you do is, I'd simply go on as I do with all the committees and board. As soon as I get notified, I can't, I cancel it on the town calendar. That is the process. I'd like it first to stay that way.
That if it's within, that's like the one spot. We have to tell the press that we're having a special select board meeting. So I think that the chairman of the committee, if they canceled, should notify you. I mean, she could have notified you.
She's not the chair of the committee.
She's not even on the committee.
Right. She's not the, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I didn't say that. I said the chair of the committee.
But if removed from the website, from the town website, I'll see that.
Well, I guess it happened very quick, very shortly before the meeting, so.
And she didn't even verbally tell us. Somebody in the office saw it on Facebook.
Who is the chair?
So I just, I disconnect.
The reason I bring it up is, this is not the first occasion. It's, I think.
But you're not on it anymore.
No, Dan, Dan.
Let the clerk know as soon as, like, with a phone call. Don't assume he's on Facebook. We don't. But I don't.
No, and I think your point is well taken. Facebook's not part of the.
No, absolutely not.
Immoral. Not notification, although you seem to find a lot out.
I would be, yeah.
Personally.
So I just wanted to thank the town for putting up this lovely tree. It's very nice. And I know it took a little bit to put our little ornaments on and it's very cheerful and thank you.
That's what I have red on today. That's the tree. I'm gonna thank our domestic goddess, Patsy.
Oh, yeah.
That's Patsy. Penny and I separated it and darn help for head of all the mirrors.
It's nice to have the little floorboard here. And we are going to have, obviously to say recycling. There was something to say about recycling. Recycling will not be open New Year's Eve day. Along with Friday and Saturday of Christmas.
Of Christmas.
Yes. But this one's a little different, so that one had your request. Okay.
Could you vote on that actually?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we close recycling for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Just the New Year's Eve.
Just the New Year's Eve one?
The other one's by policy.
Oh, okay. Just to close it for New Year's Eve.
Second.
All in favor? And then we don't have to have a special select board meeting for Christmas because it's a Sunday, so we can still have it on Wednesday, correct?
Yeah.
So, yes, all right.
There is a Christmas pudding, uh, occasion at the library on the seventeenth at four.
And I think that Wanda has here some, something listed on the seventeenth as well, from eleven to two. There's a Christmas party at the LCOC and that's for the children.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
This weekend is Legion and they have an amazing party.
Yes, and that's, when is that? That's this Saturday. Because Penny, Penny's been working on it. Yes. It's, um, this Saturday at the Legion for all the children. They all get, they get to see Santa, I believe, and get a gift and twelve, twelve under.
Oh, while we're at it.
And do you know about the, there is a, not a funeral, but a wake or something for Marilyn Nats who has passed away.
Oh, no.
Yes, she did a couple of Saturdays ago. And it will be on the Sunday.
This, this Sunday?
This Sunday at what time?
Two is what I think.
I think it's two.
It is a party afterwards.
And, yeah, it's up on the, it's at her home.
It's at her house, yeah. Her son calls us.
Yeah, Charlie, yeah.
Is that what you were gonna say?
Nope.
Okay, Jason, we're on.
I would just like to say that Dicky here has got no roller skating.
Yes.
How did you get that going? Does that not hurt the floor?
No.
I'll be darned. Can you roll?
It's not, it's not, it's not in the gym. So it's not on the wooden floor.
Where is it?
It's in the cafeteria. It's just like.
Oh, okay, okay. Cause I remember going through high school and we could never do roller skating on the.
No, we could not.
They play basketball.
When does that happen? It's on Saturday evening and Sunday afternoon. But it's not happening this weekend. We are gonna have it the weekend before Christmas. And it's actually going to be Saturday night from six-thirty to nine and Sunday, twelve-thirty to three. And anybody that wears anything to do with Christmas is free skating off both nights. And I mean, that's a great thing for the kids. And then we're gonna be off until, after the holidays. But then it's going to be on Saturday, Saturday evening, Sunday afternoon, right up till the April break. Outside, outside of anything that may be a conflict of course.
And you may not know anything about this, but is there anything being done about an ice skating rink? Cause that was happening last year.
They have.
If this temperature stays fifty degrees.
Yeah, I know.
It's just putting anybody.
We could have mud rush when that revealed.
Starting in January.
But I'm sure they will be.
Yeah, yeah.
They have that rink that Barbara Matthews.
Yeah, she had a grant.
Bill actually, I think, got that from Doug.
Yeah.
And they bring it out in winter time.
Lovely, yeah. That is a lovely thing. I know I've donated a couple pair of skates to them.
They did a bike here.
Yeah.
Bring your kids out, folks. It's something.
So far we've had approximately between fifteen and sixty sets of skates donated.
Nice.
For this, so that any.
Wow. That is great.
Could you be able to? Yeah.
It's a wonderful thing for the kids. It's wonderful that you did that. Thank you.
What's more?
Yeah.
What? Um, we'll entertain a, we'll entertain a chair.
Let's. Let's turn.
Okay.